Our first item on the agenda is the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Steve, would you like to introduce our new person over there to everybody?
Thank you, Madam Chairperson. So this is Patricia Trish Sherwin. So she's the new interim engineering clerk. So you'll be seeing her name on a lot of emails and she'll be working with the Planning, Commission and staff and Roger and Gannon Fleming and Amy and Gilmore Associates. So please welcome her aboard.
Welcome, Trish.
Welcome.
Great to have you. Okay. Second item is the minutes from June 5th, 2017. Are there any additions or corrections to them?
Hold on. Oh, no, I'm going to abstain. I was not at the meeting.
Okay. It's been moved. Second? We're second. Okay. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The minutes are approved. Wheeler Field has been pulled from the agenda for this evening. So the only item we'll be hearing is 409 to 413 East Lancaster Avenue. We're going to turn things around a little bit this evening and we're going to listen to the neighbors first. Now, what I request is that you don't keep repeating yourself. For example, if Person A says something, Person B doesn't have to get up and say the same thing. Do we have somebody that can sort of be representational of the group? If so, would you like to come forward, please?
Helen Gleason, 331 Pembroke North.
Is that mic live there?
Pardon me?
Yeah, is the mic live?
How do I know it?
Okay, you're good. Go ahead.
I just wanted to say that we did, as of your suggestion at the last meeting, we did meet with the developer and architect, attorney, landscape architect, I guess on the 18th or 20th of June. And afterwards, we prepared a list, I think that I sent to you, Kathy, of about, oh, I'd say a dozen and a half items. And Patrick did get back to us and from Emerson Group, got back to us with answers to just about all of them. We had another meeting this afternoon with them at their office. And I've seen there are changes to the design and everything. There's a big change.
Good.
I think there's a big, I shouldn't be telling you how to do your business, but there's a big change there. And we did over a lot of things and it seems that, you know, we're sort of more with it now than we were then, that's for sure.
Okay. What were some of your major concerns?
Our major concerns were, one of my concerns was the tower.
The height?
Yes, yes. And just a number of other things, which I'm sure that they will be showing you exhibits and all that, you'll be able to tell from that. But as far as the other changes, I'd like to ask Philip Demming to come up and address that if we could.
Okay.
Okay?
Thank you.
Very much.
Thank you for the opportunity. I'm Philip Demming, 332 Iron Works Way. We would like to also thank the Emerson Group for their opportunity to speak, not only today on the 18th, but also on the 20th of June, and thank you for encouraging that meeting. We had a number of items that we met, ranging from lighting, which you may hear of tonight, as well as vegetation, concern about parking, which we felt that was addressed appropriately at this time, trash removal and location has been addressed, and we've been assured that they will make accommodations to our needs on that. We also spoke to them on other areas relating to fire emergency areas where the strand pipes will be located, so for the fire pumpers to hook up to the building so it doesn't come on to the property of Iron Works Way, or from a safety standpoint, they've addressed that for us. They've also indicated that they will be putting certain equipment throughout the building relating to generators, and they promised to put it in the basement. And in terms of access from their property on our property, which there are two access ways, one we actually control, the other one is on their property line, and we've had some discussions on that, and they're going to be making assurances to installing such equipment, such as railing, things of that nature. So we have, as Ms. Gleason had mentioned, we've had about a dozen items. We've had that opportunity to talk to each one of them. There's some one only outstanding issue and we're working with their counsel on.
And which one is that?
That's relating to a weekend utilization of their parking lot.
Right. You had mentioned something about the possibility of some of the residents from your group being able to park there. What was it from?
From Friday evening until Sunday midnight.
Are they in possible agreement with that once the legalese is worked out?
Yes, they've made a good faith effort to express that they are going to be coming up with a document, assuming the licensing, and then present it to us as early as next week.
Okay. So how would you sum up the overall feel of your group towards this project?
We're very pleased to have the opportunity to have this discussion with the Emerson Group. Like you, you're seeing the drawings for the first time tonight, maybe. We've only seen them a couple hours in advance of you.
We haven't seen them.
So while we've only, we're about a couple hours ahead of you, we're still digesting that information, but we don't see any major impediment at this point.
Okay, great. Thank you.
Thank you.
Any other neighbors care to speak? If not, then why don't we have the applicant come up? Yes, ma'am, come on up.
My name is Barbara Giacomoosy. I'm at 225 Iron Works Way. My concern was, I understand we have the landscape architecture person here to discuss the lighting, and I'm just concerned about, there's flood lighting now, there's a lot of light pollution, and, you know, what is the difference going to be in the lighting in terms of lumens and in terms of where they're placed, their height, et cetera?
All right.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Cynthia Roberts, 321 Iron Works Way. Vegetation and are looking down on the parking lot for 12 months out of the year versus four months out of the year. If we could possibly have more narrow evergreens, narrow evergreens, I mean juniper or cypress tall, skinny to block out the view of the cars, and in some cases block out the light also that will be shining in our windows. But looking at a parking lot is a bit unappetizing.
All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Anyone else? If not, then we'll move towards the applicant. Who is representing?
Thank you.
Yes.
Good evening.
Thank you.
Fred Fromhold. I'm an attorney and here on behalf of the applicant, the Emerson Group. We have with us tonight also Lisa Thomas, who is a landscape architect with Glack and Thomas Panzak, Stephen Bakker, civil engineer from Mammoni Inc., and Frank Tavani, who is traffic engineer with F. Tavani and Associates. And I want to also extend our appreciation to the Planning Commission at their last meeting and their suggestion, which we were intent on following up with independently, but I think it was excellent that it came from you to meet with our neighbors. And we did have a very nice meeting. Helen Gleason had hosted the original meeting and we discussed all issues. And as a result of that meeting, she generated, excuse me, a memorandum with all of the points that we had discussed and we had tentatively agreed on. And we responded to that email list in writing. With respect to the one point that Mr. Demming had mentioned with regard to parking, we will enter into a license agreement with the condominium so that there can be parking at those times that they indicated between Friday evening and Sunday midnight on the Emerson property. And we had talked about making 10 spaces available. I think that would be the substance of the license agreement, and I think as a practical matter on a neighborly basis, there may be additional opportunity for additional spaces if they are available and they would be available should special circumstances, events occur as they often do throughout the year. So there is, I think, an agreement on a certain specified number, but then I think good neighbors can work things out in an appropriate fashion. So it is convenient. There is now a stair connection between the properties. There are further agreements with respect to the installation of a gate and so forth at Emerson's expense, and we will follow through on all of those points as we have agreed. And I had told Mr. Demming we will provide to him next week, by next week, sometime next week, a license agreement that would address the parking. We have been working on the plans. Paul Bloomfield, the architect, is not here tonight. That's the one name I did not mention. He was not able to attend. But we, Paul was there this afternoon to review the planned revisions with the group that we, with whom we met. Lisa Thomas, who is our landscape architect, can run through those revisions with you and describe to you the basic plan and design revisions that have been made to the building. She can also address some of the points that you've just heard from the neighbors with respect to landscaping and lighting. Some of these we did discuss with you last month, but we can just update on those points. We have the latest plans from Mammoni and Associates, and I don't think anything is materially different in terms of the layout of the parking of the building than what you had seen last. There was some accommodation with respect to sewer lines and with comments received from the Fire Marshal with regard to access through the, that front parking area between Lancaster and the building for certain fire emergency vehicles. There had been a suggestion that instead of those islands that were at either end there, that there be collapsible bollards. We can certainly do that, and that is shown on the plans. One other idea that we put forth for your consideration, if it would be an acceptable alternative to the Fire Marshal, is perhaps some mountable curb islands in the front so that you would have the feel of grass in those islands. It would be a pervious area, a perceived pervious area. I think it might look more attractive. We can do either. So that if that's something you would like us to discuss with the Fire Marshal, we would be happy to do that. What I'd like is for Stephen Bakker from Mammoni just to run through the changes on the engineering drawings on the site plan. And then I'd like Lisa Thomas to come up and address the landscaping, the lighting, and those design changes to the building itself. And as you know, we, the applicant, are required to go before the Design Review Board with these drawings. So I'm sure we have not heard the last of comments on the architecture of the proposed building. But I think as Ms. Gleason had said to you, we have made some modifications that I think have been positively received by our neighbors. So Stephen?
Check, one, two.
Fred, while you pass those, then I'm just going to ask, I'm assuming that none of the changes impact the variances you received at the zoning, the zoning hearing, none of the changes affect the decision you got from the zoning hearing board, correct?
We don't believe.
Okay.
That's correct.
Thank you.
So here's our illustrative site plan. It's pretty easy to see. The curbing he was talking about is right here in front. These used to be islands and they were, we had them kind of pointed, but we replaced them with just parking paint and collapsible bollards. But we could also do the mountable curb there, as Fred was saying. One of the biggest changes on the plan is just showing the sidewalk improvements on Lancaster Avenue. That was already planned, but it just makes it more clear, I guess. Here's our record plan. You can see the sewer extension. We had met with Public Works and they wanted us to replace this because it was in bad condition. So new sewer lines for each building were proposed. Here's our grading and utility plan. Nothing major has changed. We had some stormwater revisions to avoid utilities, but that's about it. So no major, major design changes, really.
May I ask you a question about the sidewalk? So I'm still struck by how close the sidewalk is to Lancaster Avenue. And I'm puzzled, I know it doesn't always look correct to.
On plan view?
Pardon me?
On plan view?
No, no, no. I know that it doesn't always, you know, to look at the plan, to see the sidewalk, you know, take a curve, a meandering curve, but the fact is we have sidewalks all through the township that meander around trees. I just don't understand why we're not pulling that sidewalk farther off of Lancaster Avenue.
Right.
Even if it means there's a bit of a jag to it on, you know, either end as it meets up with the property that's to the east and west of it, for your stretch, it would be further off of the street.
Yeah, I agree.
I don't get it.
A bigger verge would be better. We just chose two feet because of, that was on the comprehensive plan, I believe.
Is that, is it, we are in the midst of it, we're about to. So Steve, Mr. Norsini, do we, are we really okay with just a two-foot gap between Lancaster Avenue at that stretch where the 35 mile an hour speed limit is? So in the Wayne Business Overlay District where the, where the speed limit is supposed to be 25, where it's supposed to be 25, even at that, I would say that there's, it's a much wider sidewalk also in front of the Wayne Business District. It just, two feet doesn't seem like much off of that stretch of Lancaster.
I mean, Amy could correct me if I'm wrong, but I think with curbed, when the roads are curbed by PennDOT standards, they could be right up against the curb with their sidewalk. Is part of this also because PICO has a pole relocation project that's going on there? And, correct me if I'm wrong, Commissioner Higgins, we met with PICO out on the site and they were going to move the poles back so they would fall directly back in the sidewalk. So I'll ask the applicant if, so a six foot, a total of six foot, how does that work with the PICO poles where they're being installed, or has that been broached yet?
The biggest thing about the two foot is we went that, that was just because of the comprehensive plan, but also because the further you push it back, the more grading you would have to do. So if you, you push it back, essentially you're pushing paving back and you might be required walls or things of that nature, so.
I guess my question specifically is, does the new sidewalk placement take into consideration the pole relocation by PICO?
I mean, right now, the poles are in the middle of the sidewalk, I believe.
Correct, but they're pretty. I mean, we can get them in touch with you, they, they will be moving them, and the thought would be they're going to be on the north side of your sidewalk, and I don't know how that's going to play out.
The poles would be within the two-foot verge, yeah.
Maybe you ought to contact them and see where the poles are going to be and have it marked before you even put in your sidewalk.
Because PennDOT likes 18 inches from there, so I don't know if that would work.
They're basically right, right in the.
Might force you to move your sidewalk.
Correct.
Have you, neander around it, yeah.
Have you folks looked at the possibility of doing underground service to the buildings instead of poles? Because that would solve the sidewalk problem right away.
No, we, no, we just assumed.
That would probably be PICO.
We just assumed overhead.
Steve, I'm sorry, back to the issue that the architect just raised. I mean, we are set to embark on a new comp plan, so I don't know that the township is attached to much that's in the current one that's about 17 years old. Is there a strong feeling about two feet from Lancaster Avenue being the correct distance between the sidewalk and the street?
When we came out with the two feet, it was because we were looking at the Radnor Family Practice, and there's a two-foot grass verge between the curb line and the sidewalk as you move east of this site. And we were trying to match what was existing at that location.
But when you, so good, thank you.
So that's where the two feet came from.
Great, so here's my.
And there was no objection to that at that point, so.
No objection to whom?
Well, because Radnor Family Place, when that came in for redevelopment is 425, I think was the project, 427, they had a two-foot verge, and this didn't come up at that point. So now you have that plan with the two-foot verge, and now you're questioning the two-foot verge here, which was brought up to match what we had indicated for 427.
I understand what you're saying. Appreciate that. I'm just saying empirically, is two feet the right amount off of that, a busy stretch of Lancaster?
You can take, the sidewalk can be immediately adjacent to the curb. I'm just saying that, that has to be something in your ordinance for that to become something that you can hang something, you know.
No, I appreciate that. I'm asking from an opinion standpoint, is two feet.
Four feet's better. You know.
Thank you. That's the answer to my question.
Yeah, you know, it depends on your right of way.
Okay. No, that's really, so four feet would be more ideal. Well, okay, but we don't have 10 feet, so, all right, thank you.
Yeah, and let me just comment on that. I don't think we disagree with the principle that four feet is better than two feet for a verge, just in terms of that feel and comfort for a pedestrian. And the reason that we have two feet right from the beginning through further plan revisions and reviews and having been before you and we're still at two feet is because that's kind of what the code requires. And from our perspective, and I think also another element for a pedestrian, it did enable us at the two feet, the plus side of that equation is that we were able to get rid of the retaining wall, which when you're a pedestrian, having a retaining wall isn't the most comfortable element either. We were able to grade up for the wall. I don't know how far back we could go beyond the two feet and still be able to grade up in accordance with other code requirements and avoid the wall, which I think would be nice if we were able to do that.
No, I appreciate that. And I, so I was not here last month, I would have raised this last month. And I appreciate that answer, Fred, I do. And the last time I saw this plan, you still hadn't gone to zoning, so I wasn't even sure what was going to happen with the parking decision in the front. That's, for me, that's the reason why it's just coming up now. I appreciate it. Thank you.
And I think the other element was sort of the zig and the zag between our, having something that was more than two feet and then going to the two feet, whatever, you know, downside there is to a pedestrian from kind of going back and forth there. But we understand the point.
Okay. But you could be flexible on that, probably. Well, you're going to have to be because you don't know where the poles are going to be.
Sure.
So you need to find that out first.
And I think, you know, that's an element of the plan that can and should be fine-tuned as we continue.
All right. What is, it'd be nice to be able to see elevations, but we can't read anything on these because they're too small.
The elevations of the building?
No, no. The, the ground elevation. How much of a slope is there in that front green space there? How many feet does it go up?
Maybe Stephen can comment. Stephen can comment on what the proposed slope is on these plans now.
Okay. I'm just interested in that little green strip in the front right now.
Right, right. So the, you know, you have the street as it goes up grade, and then you'd have the curb, and then the two-foot verge is basically flat, and then the sidewalk, and then it goes up at about three to one.
Three to one?
Yeah, three to one, yeah.
So where the parking is, is how many feet higher than the sidewalk?
About, about, it's three feet up.
Three feet up, okay.
But it's, it's over about 20 feet.
That would require a wall.
Yeah, so.
That green strip is 20 feet wide?
Well, we have the two-foot verge and then the sidewalk, and then we have a large green strip, and then the parking.
So the green strip's about 14 feet wide, then?
Between the sidewalk and the parking.
Yeah, it's about 14 feet. Okay. Well, if there's two feet and then four feet, that's six, and if it's 20 feet to the green.
That's what I need a scale.
Yeah, but if you have, the scale's on there, it says a half an inch is 20. Okay, you read this.
We're going to give you a, an answer to that.
It's about 15, yeah.
Oh, the scale's, the scale's online. Oh, right, right there.
We have just scaled it on a larger plan, and I believe the answer is the grass, the grass area is 15 feet.
Okay, thank you.
Could I ask the applicant, so if, and, so I'm working backwards, if PennDOT wants the utility poles to be 18 inches from behind the curb, and I'm going to guess at the size of a utility pole, let's say it's 12 inches. So that's already putting you back, and I know the engineer said he would, you know, bring the sidewalk around. Would it be, we might be able to meet what the Planning Commission is looking for if you just made the entire sidewalk consistent with whatever it takes you to get behind the poles and then dive in, or dive in, then transition in to 427. So we could get maybe a three-foot verge out of this. It would be consistent all the way down for the poles, and then where you meet 427 East Lancaster, you go back to that two-foot. That might give the Planning Commission a bigger verge, and I think aesthetically speaking, it would look better than bumping out around every utility pole that came on your frontage. It would be better looking for your client and I think for the residents.
I agree with that comment. And are you thinking then about a three-foot verge?
Well, I just work back with the PennDOT requirement plus the diameter of the pole takes you where the sidewalk would have to be. And then you, that would be your consistent frontage until you connect on either end and you just meet what's on either end. But that would avoid the serpentine look every time there's a pole.
Right.
Well, you're also, it seems like you're meeting a driveway on either side, so it's not like your sidewalk is going to be like this.
That's exactly what I was thinking.
The sidewalk will go straight across, then you have driveway there, and they could go over to wherever the other sidewalk happens to be.
That's right. It would make it a more seamless connection, really, that way, yeah.
Could you collect people as they come onto your site and then just move the sidewalk up to the 70, the 74 contour, just move the sidewalk back that 10 feet?
I'm sorry, could we?
Like, as, as people come down along the sidewalk, they cross over onto your property, can't you collect people at each end of that and then just move the sidewalk up to the 74 contour and take them straight across, and then you can landscape from the road to the sidewalk?
I think they have grading issues with that, so they're not going to have compliant slopes.
They don't have grading issues.
He meant take the sidewalk back to, closer to the parking, I think, right?
When the sidewalk crosses back over, they'll have a grading issue. They're up at three to one.
Most likely.
They go down three feet.
All right.
Two, they go to, go from 73.
Right, but when you come back to tie, when you come back across to tie in on the driveways, they're going to have issues.
No, you can collect people at each end and create a little area.
Well, how do you, how do you get from the end to end, back into the other sidewalk without crossing that grade that's three to one?
You walk up steps or ramp and go all the way across.
That would be more difficult, especially in.
It's on the driveway.
In the ADA.
It's on the driveway.
Why, rather than worry about that now because we don't know where the poles are, my concern is, what is the width of the driveways?
The western one is 16 feet, and that's a one-way drive.
It's 16 feet at the opening?
Correct. Well, at the opening, it's 16 plus two 10-foot radiuses, so essentially. Well, at the opening, it's 16 plus two 10-foot radiuses, so essentially...
What is the width between those two radiuses?
Well, essentially, it'd be 36.
How could it be?
10, 10, 16, and 10.
You mean that opening there is 36 feet wide? Now, I want to know what the opening is, the car way there between the two curves.
Yep, about 30, about 36. But that's curb point to curb point, and then it...
In the center?
And then it goes up to 16.
The last couple of feet on the outer limits are very fine.
Where it narrows down on the curve.
That is 16, that's 16.
That's 16.
Which is very wide for one way, very wide.
However, you're coming off a 35 mile an hour road.
Which I think is appropriate.
And you have to stop and make a right turn, basically.
Right, right.
A 90-degree turn.
The right is the more difficult turn, for sure.
And then you're narrowing down to what?
13, 13 feet and 8 inches, or 13, 10, 13 feet and 10 inches. But that's all the way up at the building.
13 feet, then, and is that including, assuming that the car will be parked correctly there?
In the two parallel spaces, you mean?
Mm-hmm.
No, there's a small gap between, the parallel spot is eight feet wide, and then there's about two feet, and then there's just shy of a 14-foot driveway.
Okay, so that, I think the effect is you really have a 10-foot wide parallel space without interfering with the almost 14-foot wide driveway. So from paving to paving, left to right, at the point of the parallel space is close to 24 feet?
Right, right, correct. That's split between 407 and 409.
Right, that's a shared driveway. Emerson owns the buildings on both sides, but yes...
According to these drawings, the entire driveway is on...
Oh, right, 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 right. All right, he means, yeah, essentially, most of it is on the, yeah, 407.
What happens if somebody turns in there and there's somebody trying to parallel park next to the building?
You'd have to stop.
That's my concern.
Yeah.
Because that would push people out onto Lancaster then in a holding pattern.
You'd have to have about three cars queued up. Yeah, I think you'd be fine.
Do you have relief on the eight-foot wide parallel parking spot? I don't have my code book with me, which is unheard of for me, but I don't remember, no, it is. Eight-foot wide parallel parking spot?
I believe that's the regulation, 8 and 22.
For parallel?
Yes, yeah, yeah.
Okay.
Our normal spots are nine and a half by 20.
Okay, excuse me, I need a laser pointer, but what I was suggesting was, as you step onto the green area between your property lines, that we create a little landing area there and can use that to overcome the grade, and then just run straight across the site? Does that work? I would think it would work.
There's one behind you if you want to get up and point to it.
Do you ever think about taking down 409? So if we could, if we could just create a landing area here where people come across, you have a little pocket, like a little pocket park there, and then just move them up to the next contour and run straight across the site, and then just landscape along Lancaster Avenue.
So you're saying you'd basically terrace that area?
Yeah, terrace, yeah, thank you, yeah. Yeah, you'd terrace that area, overcome the difference in height, and then just run straight across. You can landscape all of the front, not worry about the poles, keep people off of the street, and they're 10 or 15 feet back.
Well, let me say this, I'd like Lisa to comment on the landscaping in that area and whether she has any opinions at this point. This is the first we've heard of that suggestion, so we haven't looked at it yet to see how that would work with ADA and everything else, so clearly, it's something that we could look at and share the pros and cons of that type of feature. Here's what I view as the con of that. I assume, does that get us out of the right-of-way of the street? Right now, is the sidewalk in the right-of-way of Lancaster Avenue?
Yes, it would.
And were you to do that and move the sidewalk back to our property on our lot? Now...
The sidewalk, how we have it proposed, is in the right-of-way. If you pushed it up, it would still be within the right-of-way?
Yeah, I'm not sure how far you can push it and still be in the right. These are things that we could look at. I mean, and to push it out of the right-of-way then creates other issues with respect to impervious coverage and...
The right-of-way line runs, it's right there on the plan, Fred.
Yeah, right, yeah. Yeah, you would have room with the right-of-way, but just looking at quick grading, I don't think it would work without steps or, and then it makes it not handicap accessible.
Okay. Could we see the elevations, the illustrations that you have?
And I'm going to ask Lisa to go through them with you.
Good evening, Lisa Thomas, Glack &amp; Thomas Panzak. This is the previous elevation that we were with you, in front of you with last time, and I wanted to be able to compare so that you could see the changes. The previous elevation, we were asked to take a look at the tower and also the facade in terms of some changes and adjustments to massing. I'm not sure I can line them up next to each other. So first, I'll go over the new one, and then I'll show you both of them simultaneously. The top is the street elevation, and you can see that the, we focused on this area of the building, the either end is the same. This is the existing building that's out there, and the materials will be matching what the existing building out there is with the stone, the stucco, and the siding. So in the centerpiece of the building, in the very center, the gable and this facade area was widened. An additional window was added, previously it was two windows, now it's three. This is the area that the glass was made bigger and came all the way down partway through to the second floor. So previously, it was just the top floor, and the architect brought it down to the second floor. Over towards the tower, another glass area was created to open up the space and to provide light and air and to change the solid and the voids on the building. The tower was narrowed and slightly shortened in terms of the changes.
Is that a window in the top of the tower?
Yes, the windows were added right through here. And I wanted to talk about this area, this was something that I don't believe was talked about last time. This is open right through here, so the roof is kind of set up above the stonework, so it's open to the air, so you can kind of see through it, just to let you know. The previous elevations, you'll see them again, I didn't think really adequately noted that detail to what was going on here. To the rear elevation, again, you can see the opening with the glass in the rear, and then the widening of the gable here, and over towards, I get my rights and left mixed up, over towards, I think it's the east side, he added a pergola here, and what's going to happen in this area is all of the, some AC equipment will be at this level and will be hidden, and the pergola will be on top of it. So I want to compare and contrast, if we can, between the previous one and the new one. Again, you can see how much more glass is going here in this area. There were windows and siding, it's been opened up. You can see the widening of this gable with the additional window, adding a little more balance and mass in this area. Here you can see the two-story glass area here. This is actually a little balcony, which is an interesting detail to have. The doorway, I wanted to point out, you can't see it because of the tree, but it was not at any level that it is here, too. So it's an arched opening that you walk into a porch area and then to the door, again, with a lot more glass. This side is the same, the east side, and then you can see the differential and the massing of the tower. And again, I want to point out why I wanted to mention that that area is open to the air, it kind of sits on top of the tower.
What's in the tower, an elevator?
It's a stairway, an elevator, and then at the top here, there's going to be HVAC hidden from view right in this area.
And the reason to leave it open is for circulation of the HVAC?
I think it's that and aesthetics, just to give it some lightness.
Appreciate the lightness, I guess, I'm just concerned that if it were enclosed, it might bury the sound better. So I appreciate the aesthetics of the look, but if the sound is going to carry more in an open...
We can consult the architect and find out about the sound issues.
Work it out in a way that, because I think ultimately aesthetics are lovely, but I think the neighbors will care more if the sound carries.
Understood, yep, understood. So that gives you an idea of the changes, you can see them side by side.
What's the height of the tower?
The height of the tower is 42 feet.
Is that allowed, by code? It is?
Mr. Bloomfield had checked that out with Kevin Kachansky, that that doesn't count towards building height. I think the peak of the ridge on the addition...
Yeah, this is 36 feet above.
Right.
And this is 34, and this is 35.
Right, so that you measure building height on the sloped roof to, at a point midway, so it's lower than what is permitted.
Thank you.
Any other questions about the architecture?
Questions from the board? No? Okay, thank you. Does anybody from the board have any questions or comments regarding the plans we saw?
I have landscape architecture, if anybody's interested in that.
Okay, we'll get to that.
Well, I see we have a letter from Omeni, dated July 11, 2017, and there's certain things in here as I read it that I think that they're proposing, that they are not necessarily agreeing with, I believe, but they were heard earlier from our staff. Item number four under zoning says it's our opinion that our project does not need a loading zone. And there's a couple of other comments in here, and I'm wondering if we could have, wouldn't it be beneficial to have a report from our staff?
Yeah, that's what I was going to do next.
I think we're flying kind of blind a little bit. It sounds all fine, but we need to have some guidance.
Yeah, exactly, I just, since we didn't have plans, I wanted to get sort of a feel of what was happening with the plans first, and I had full intentions of going back to that, and we can do that now if you'd like on there. Why don't we hold up on the landscape for the moment? Thank you. Would you like to go through the letters now, bringing those points up? Sure.
I'd like to hear from the staff, or be told we're going to get an analysis from the staff.
Okay.
I mean, the applicant provides the plans, the consultant, staff, Ray Daly, we can have something, you know, depending when we get them for the next meeting, but you're correct, we're all flying.
So, I'm just confused why we didn't just wait until the plans were submitted and reviewed before putting this on the agenda.
Would somebody like to answer that question?
I can answer, Madam Chairman. So we thought it was a good idea to more or less informally have the applicant present that and give the residents another meeting to come out to and let the planning commission hear where they stood on things, good, bad, or indifferent, and it seems like it's more for the good, so this has kind of come around full circle. That was really my thought, it's for the residents to be able to be represented and speak directly to the planning commission, and depending what we get the plans for the next, for that meeting, we'll, you know, Roger, Amy, the rest of us will have all the hard comments that you need addressing each of these items.
Okay.
Should we table this till the next meeting?
Yes, perhaps we should just allow the public to speak instead.
Well, they did.
They did. If they have anything after what was presented.
I guess, as long as we're kind of treating this almost like an interim sketch plan, I mean, if the expectation was a decision tonight, my biggest concern about that is not the changes you've made and the efforts you've made. It would be a horrific precedent for us to set to approve a plan that the township staff hasn't even seen an official plan. So it's, so as an interim step, you know, an interim sketch plan, I mean, this is lovely, and I think it's great that the public's had an opportunity to see it and anyone else who couldn't attend the meeting, but I won't vote in support of it tonight.
I think we're all in that same position.
Okay, all right, I mean, I just wanted to be clear on that. Okay, let's talk about your questions, then. Or would you like to go through the ones, staff, that maybe the applicant is not agreeing with?
Madam Chairman, I think we just, I would move, we table this until they, until our staff can go through this and give us something we can sink our teeth into, work with, and the residents, and of course, the applicant has a chance to address it.
Oops, sorry. I usually turn it off. Duck got out of my bag. That would be fine, but there's two things that I would like brought up, and we can do that. One is number five. The accessibility, removing some of the islands and so forth so that fire equipment can get in there. I still have a problem with the actual width of the entrances and exits, and did you get signed easements from the property owners on either side? I know it's the same property owner to the west, but how about the east?
Yeah. We don't have one from the west, certainly, that can be done, so that it is at least recorded, you know, in the event that we're, any future transfer of the property. It certainly isn't the plan, but it's an understandable concern, so that can be done. With respect to the property to the east, what we've been calling the dentist office property, I think we had explained that we are providing an easement to the dentist, as is shown on the plan. We are not obtaining an easement from the dentist to enter his driveway. In fact, the state of preference, I believe, of the dentist, and I haven't had any direct communication with the dentist. I think Paul Bloomfield has, and Patrick Gibbons may have had some contact as well. But I believe, and Patrick, you correct me if I'm wrong on this, that the dentist does not want traffic to our site entering through his driveway, has no problem with our exiting on our site with his enjoying an easement in what would be an approved point of ingress and egress at that location. So we don't have an easement from the dentist property, and we don't believe that we need an easement as it relates to this plan.
I'm very concerned about that. Delaware County Planning Commission brought that up also, because right now, the present occupant of that property to the east allows you to do this. If you take that away and somebody else comes in, they change the plans entirely, that makes your entrances and exits even worse than what they are now. And I think the fact that the same property owner is to the west would allow you to do some modifications there that would give you a much larger possible two-way entrance, if need be. It appears that you have ramp on the property to the west, like a handicap access into that building.
Correct.
Why can't that be removed and put somewhere else so that you have a good width going back through there? I know you can't answer that now, but...
I can't, but you have made the point, and I think we can provide you an answer one way or another on that. We can certainly look at what the implications of doing that, what they would be. That could be an option, and whether it's a present or a future option. Our belief is that this circulation pattern, which is a clockwise pattern, and our traffic exiting on the east side of the building... and our traffic exiting on the east side of the building, we have sufficient room within the driveway on our own property to exit traffic there. We don't need the dentist's property in order to exit traffic there. Now, I think we have shown that for a fire access, that there, you know, is the ability to emergency access that for the fire company. And I think as a practical matter, there's always an emergency easement for fire equipment over adjoining properties, so whatever would work for the fire company. But as I told you also in the front of the building, we have those collapsible bollards, and we can take a more careful look at that as well. So I think this meeting has been productive, although you're not going to make a recommendation tonight. But I think it's been productive. You have made certain comments and asked us to take a look at additional items that we kind of will do.
Can I just make one more comment?
Sure, absolutely.
Yeah, if you look at your page three, which has the aerial photo on it, and if you look at the park directly across the street, that's all I'm suggesting, is that the park across the street loops that sidewalk and gives some space. Right, yeah, that's what I'm suggesting.
Yeah, and we can and will look at all of these things, yeah.
I understand what you're saying, Stephen. I looked at the grades, and it's a three-to-one slope up from the sidewalk, and there's not an ADA accessible way to get people up the hill and across. It's the getting up that's the problem.
Don't have, that slope doesn't exist on the south side of Lancaster, in that park.
Correct. It actually goes, on the south side, it kind of goes downhill a little bit.
I know, but even at that, it's not as sharp or great down.
Right, but it's a very, right now, today, there's retaining walls right up against the sidewalk, and our goal is to eliminate the retaining walls and make it softer. But we'll have a three-to-one slope, and that's 33%. An ADA is no, 12 to one, and 5% is without a ramp. So it's the getting up that's the problem.
Lisa, I have a quick question for you. How far would you have to go east and west to get the ADA access ramp for your sidewalk? In other words, how far...
To get up?
To get up. How far would you have to go to the east and west? I mean, could you start this, because they own to the west, so could you start it?
So you're saying so we could start here. The other challenge is the grades, as you, since we know it goes up, the grades of all the driveways go up, too. So there's a challenge in crossing those driveways because they're sloped. We need a flat way to cross the driveways.
Yes, you'd have to come down flat the driveway and then go down again.
Go down even steeper into the street. And one of the things we've been talking about is making a smooth transition from the street up without having a big hump. And so this could sort of start to, it's a little bit of a Swiss watch there, and it could start to aggravate that slope and getting the ADA cross slopes even.
You're going up two feet, according to this contour.
Well, it's the two, it's still the steepness of the two feet. It's a very tight little area. We can, I can talk to you, sidebar about it. I do understand exactly what you're saying, though. I totally know what you're getting at.
Here's what I think.
But I'd be happy to discuss.
You've made a suggestion. We think there may be concerns about it. We've voiced them. What we need to do is take a more careful look at it so that we can come back and say whether we can, whether we can't, or if we can, what the sidewalk would look like, how long it would take to transition into it, give you a harder, better information.
So Fred, I have two quick things. One is the various items that the neighbors mentioned that you've all agreed to in spirit and intention.
Right.
Are you going to have some, are the neighbors going to have some kind of agreement? Or is there going to be something written from the applicant with regard to some of the agreements that the property owners have made?
And I think the answer is, some of the things that we've agreed to, we've modified...
To the extent you've incorporated them into the plan, that is the acknowledgement, correct.
Others could conceivably be conditions of approval, and others probably go beyond what you would call conditions of approval, but we are agreeing to them. And we can certainly have further discussion with the neighbors as to what we can bring into, let's say, conditions.
Or even aside written assurance. Okay, so that's...
That's right, yeah.
I'm kind of saying that to the neighbors as well, because appreciate the assurances, but, you know, something in writing is more protective for them.
Yeah.
So whatever you're able to work out. The other thing is, I'm looking at R5. You said that the height of the tower is 42 feet?
Yes.
So in R5, the height of a multi-dwelling or not a multi-dwelling is a maximum of either 35 or 40 feet. So how did we get to 42 on the tower?
I believe that the tower is excluded from height when you determine the height of a building.
Right, okay, yeah, you know, you're right. That's right, I don't read that in, I don't think about those in residential, but, okay, thank you. Any comments from other members of the board?
You had moved the trash. Where are you putting the trash areas now?
There is a, there is a building that is at the rear of 407, which is going to be removed, and the trash will go in that location. And there has been communication with the trash hauling company that they can pick up that trash in that area and get their truck in and then circulate around the building.
Is that enough for them, truck, to get down there?
I'm sorry?
Is that the in-way?
The 13-plus feet. Stephen?
That's okay if a car is parked there, they're going to be, truck is... So there really is no trash area on any of these lots, so really depending on 407 for that, right?
That is correct.
So we would need a cross easement for that. And the other major issue was no parking and loading and unloading. I feel very strongly about getting a better entrance in there, and I think you can do it between 407 and 409. The reason why I'm really pushing this is because you have the same owner of all the properties. This is very attractive new development. I think you need an entrance that works with it. And squeezing through a 12-foot driveway on either side, and basically, that's all you have on either side because you can't fully count on that easement that you don't have with the dentist. So we're looking at 12 feet on either side. That's pretty narrow for what this could grow into, especially if 407 is developed. And I could see that all becoming one parking lot back there, and you're going to have more cars. Because I think, what is it, you own 407 and 409, and there was, as I recall, 20 to 25 people in each of those?
Correct.
And the other thing is, right now, we're talking about 15 in each of those three buildings.
I think actually that may not be correct.
Yeah. So it was, basically, you're looking at the possibility of 75 employees. What happens if they move away and this goes to a medical office building?
We better fix the code first.
You guys own 405 and the one next to it, all the way to Iron Works?
Correct. Five, well, we own...
That's Gallagher.
Yeah, we don't own Iron Works Way, the corner, but we own two of that property, right?
So 405 and 407?
5791113.
Can you put a driveway on the left side of five and then access everything from the back?
I don't know. I think there are probably things that, there are probably a number of alternatives. And the choice has been to try to keep this as one building, 91113, and have the circulation for that one building. I think Frank Tavani had mentioned when we were here last, and he can address this in greater detail.
Well, I understand that. My problem is the entrance.
I understand, and there, I think there are a couple of aspects of the entrance. One may be the ease of the turning movements into the entrance, even if it remains one way and even if it remains its current width. The ease of access to that entry driveway from Lancaster Avenue, particularly for right-hand turns. Left turns are an easier turning movement. But on the right turns, and whether there's something that could be done to feather the radius there to make it an easier turn. You've suggested that we take another look at widening the driveway, which would mean some demolition at 407, which I think is not something that we want to do, but we can at least look at that in conjunction with improving the driveway access at Lancaster Avenue for this development.
I think removing that ramp and access there is a lot easier than tearing down part of the building.
Well...
Which I didn't bring up, but I was thinking.
I was calling that demolition. I was not, I was not thinking in terms of the building, but I was thinking of the demolition that you would need to do at that door, right?
Yeah. I'm looking at what this could become down the road. And because it is an attractive property. I like your new designs, by the way.
Thank you.
But I really would like to see better access in there. So that's my two cents. Anybody else? So we were just talking about for fire access only, is it possible to perhaps utilize Iron Works Way and put in some kind of access from the rear of the buildings and have...
Something tells me...
No, just for fire.
I understand.
No, we just discussed that. Nobody wants to use it at the back.
They're...
They want it separated. That's fine.
Yeah.
That's fine.
Let me say, there's a physical reason. That property's about seven feet higher than the rear of our property. So even if there were a willingness to make that happen, it just, I don't think can work.
Any other comments then? Is there a motion to table? Second?
Second.
Okay, we will be tabling. And hopefully, we will have the plans before the next meeting.
And further comment, the plans shouldn't come in 11 by 17. It should be the full size that we had in June.
Yeah. Would you like, when we come back, we will have, you know, the plans and the ability to project them, would you each like a full set to have before you?
Well, the custom and practice in front of us has...
Usually, we have them ahead of time.
Yeah, we have them ahead of time.
I understand. We'll have them ahead of time.
Mr. Fromhold, the requirements are in the application, all the full-size plans. That'll take care of shade tree and everybody else.
So you want them in due course?
We'd like to be able to measure them and read them.
These are yours from June.
I understand.
Okay.
Yeah. I didn't know whether you wanted us to bring something with. You want us to...
We want it in advance.
You'll have it before, yeah.
Great, all right, thank you. Pardon me? Yes, somebody waving back there? Oh, sure. Why don't, you want to look at it after the meeting? Because I, really, until we get plans, I don't want to go into that sort of detail. But, you know, feel free to meet with them after the meeting. Any other people for public comment? Yes, please. Yeah, come on up to the microphone.
Bob Stevens, 333 Iron Works Way. I think as residents, we've made an effort to try to cooperate about reviewing everything. And I would, I think it would be important for us to get a chance to see whatever's going to be replanned. If only ours before your next meeting, it would be useful, to have some assurance of that. Thank you.
Okay. Is it possible, then, to get one, let's say, footprint-type full-size plan dropped off to Helen Gleason in advance when we get ours, so that they could go over it?
We will do that.
Okay, great, thank you. Any other comments? Okay. Any old business?
I have a question. I'd like to know if we have an update on the stormwater management ordinance rewrite. We have a lot of questions in the field.
There's actually, Monday night is a Public Works Subcommittee meeting of the Board of Commissioners, as requested by Commissioner Jim Higgins, and that is one of the topics. Also, last night at the Board of Commissioners meeting, our MS4 program, the Pollution Reduction Plan, that contract was awarded to Meliora. And as some of us know, part of their presentation was, aside from projects for the Pollution Reduction Plan, was the possibility of the use of the, not just the Stormwater Management Ordinance, but the zoning ordinance and SALDA. So there's going to be, I think, a lot of things tying into that.
Well, we, as a group, have an opportunity to review all of this prior to going through the Board of Commissioners.
Absolutely, the Stormwater Management Ordinance will come before the Planning Commission.
And then when we redo our comprehensive plan, this will be worked into that.
All of those items would go before this board, this commission.
Lots of great answers, thank you.
So that was actually going to be my new business question, which, Steve, can you give us a little update on what happened with the joint Havaford-Radnor comp plan?
Susan, one last, what Elizabeth Springer was asking. If you have any, I'm chairing the Subcommittee meeting this coming Monday night on stormwater. If you have any specific requests to be included in the ordinance, you can send them to Steve or to me, and we'll do our best to get them. We're going to have a major task ahead of us to take into account all the things that have to be taken into account in light of the MS4 requirements. We also have the Delaware River Keeper, who has very strong opinions on what the ordinance should say. And Roger Phillips of Gannett Fleming has already marked up the ordinance, and so we'll have that as an input as well. But if you have anything, if any member of the Planning Commission has anything, and Regina Madrasak, of course, is on the Stormwater Advisory Committee.
I think semi-publicly, we can say one thing that's come up a number of times. We like a bigger repairian buffer, like 50 feet at least.
Well, that has come up, but there were some really good points why we should talk about that before we just, you know, I agree, but we got to talk about those things and the impact.
One thing to remember is that we could approach this one of two ways. We could try to incorporate every comment, every, all the feedback, and really do thorough analysis. Or we can take a two-tiered approach where we, there were several things that were, that most people found acceptable on all the different committees that could be implemented as an interim, because this plan would have looked a lot different had we done that two years ago when they first started talking about those. Gannett Fleming got the ball rolling with them, we vetted them, and they were down to just two or three items, and they never went forward. So if those could be implemented as an interim measure for projects exactly like this one that are heavily impervious in the existing condition, I would recommend that.
If you recall, we tried to do that two and a half years ago, and it was voted down by the board to move those forward.
I think that we need to revisit that idea at the meeting on Monday, because it will take a year to get something else done.
What was actually suggested at the meeting last night was what was voted down a couple of years ago.
Okay, because what will happen is we'll be waiting another year, and five to 10 more of these plans will come through without any real benefit from stormwater management.
I have a comment, Jim, on the couple of things we've run into on stormwater management. When we were looking at it before, there was no credit given to, let's say, smaller properties, residential properties, that are trying to put a porch on their house or something like that. Let's say if they take out a portion of their driveway and use that portion of pervious or impervious surface and put it behind their house as a patio, there's no credit given there. And I think it puts undue hardship on the local homeowners to have to go into additional stormwater management if they're willing to take out some impervious surface and put it somewhere else.
I understand that point. It came up in a real-time development that was before us at our, let's see, this is July, our last meeting in June, and that issue came up. And I think, didn't we, Roger, we worked that out so that we did give them credit?
The board provided him a, approved a waiver.
A waiver, yeah.
Well, yeah, but that forces the homeowner to go through that waiver process.
Oh, no, no, I'm only citing that as a little bit of recent history.
On that particular case, yeah.
As far as the ordinance is concerned, yes, I think we should give a lot of consideration to that as an issue. I'm in favor of it.
We talked about it in that it also would incentivize people not to just continue to add impervious, rather to replace some of the impervious when possible. Because as it is today... as it is today, why should I remove part of my driveway if I'm not going to get any credit? And so we were looking at, what's the number? Is it a 50 percent credit? Is it 100 percent credit? And that's what we talked about. So just to refresh everyone's memory. So if I were to peel up some impervious area and add some somewhere else, do I get 50 percent credit? Because that area really isn't going to infiltrate the way, an area that had never been paved over. Or do we allow an option if you modify the soils and, and restore it to a better quality coverage, then do you get 100 percent credit? That's the kinds of things we need to, to figure out.
If I can add, Madam Chair, so what we came upon last time was, so these are all very subjective items. So what I feel, like if you say, let's rewrite the ordinance, what I feel maybe is a proper approach, one of 10 people may disagree. Neither are, none of us are wrong, but it's the agreement. So I think that's where the comments have to go to the Board of Commissioners. And then the policy and the way chosen, like, the last time we did this, I wanted to do 100 percent meadow for existing condition. Some folks said, no, it should be 25 percent. Some said, no, it should be 50. None of us were wrong. They were just all different viewpoints. And I think that's, you know, just hearing this here, that's what we're going to run into. So my suggestion is, and will be to the Commissioners at the Subcommittee meeting, is we go through a process, we get those comments, and we provide them to the board for their direction. Because these are township-wide policy decisions that perhaps me and Regina, or me and Elizabeth, or Regina, we have three different, totally different thoughts on this. Or I'm too stringent, somebody's too light. It all depends on your viewpoint. So I think it's going to be a detailed process, but in the end, we're going to have to go to the board and lay out my, in my opinion, lay out all these comments with their rationale, and then come back from the board and move again. Just my thought.
Okay. I agree with everything you just said, and that's why we had those two to three small, kind of consensus items on the table to, to put forward as a, as an interim measure. Because this is minimum a one-year process. And in the next year, you know that there are going to be several plans looking a lot like the one we just saw that could have, even with a 25 percent meadow requirement, looked a lot different.
The other question I have is, a while back, several months, I think, at this point, we recommended redoing the parking requirements for medical office, separating out medical office from office with different requirements. That is really, really imperative that that happen.
They were discussed and they weren't all passed. They were discussed a month ago at a Board of Commissioners meeting, all those recommendations. And only one of those conditions, I believe it's only one ultimately, was passed.
Which was that?
I don't recall which one. I just know, oh, Jim's here. Maybe you can tell us.
Medical office, medical office parking requirements. We were, we recommended to the board, and the board voted on those items.
I didn't think any of them passed.
I believe that, I thought one component, so we, so Kathy, to answer your question, is to say that the list of recommendations that we asked the Board of Commissioners to consider with regard to some interim changes to PLO, that process occurred, votes were taken.
Nothing happened.
Maybe one item passed, but largely not.
We'll find out exactly what happened and provide that to the Planning Commission.
But it went through the process.
What, if anything was passed, we'll provide that.
Okay. All right. Any other?
I have new business.
Yes, please.
Do you have, Steve, do you have a quick update on the Havaford-Radnor comp plan, plan, intention?
Yeah, so Laurie Hanlon Woodup from, she's the Assistant Manager at Havaford Township. She came to the township and approached us. So the board, I guess it was a couple of months ago, I forget the exact date, authorized to go to RFP for a joint comprehensive plan. That's in the process now. And last night, I had requested the board, Laurie had put together, I guess somewhat of a template for a steering committee. And in a memorandum to the board, I laid out that template that she provided and asked if by the August meeting, they could come up with the six members of the steering committee for Radnor Township. Now, that was Laurie's suggestion. Obviously, the Board of Commissioners can do as, you know, as what pleases them. The one item on there was, one of Havaford's members was a commissioner. And I had asked, perhaps our board consider having a commissioner on that steering committee?
Who was the commissioner, if you recall?
I had to look at the memo. I forget. I know.
He was a person that also served on their zoning hearing board.
Right.
They had that dual role.
Chair of the zoning cell. I don't know the name, though.
So I guess my question is, how will you go about filling the, thanks for being here. How will you go about filling those roles? Are you looking for nominations?
Yeah, I think.
At this time?
It's open to every, anybody. I mean, we'll have.
Are you going, are you going to ask for applicants? Are you looking for nominations?
Well, we're going, I don't know. I think.
Because I think you.
We're faster than that. Steve, can we get anything posted to invite applications?
I know staff was going to provide a, some candidates, but candidates. And if you wish, Commissioner, we could definitely put something on the website.
Are these, are these volunteer positions?
As opposed to being paid, you mean?
Yes.
Absolutely.
Okay. I didn't know if you were volunteering your own staff. Sorry.
I want to make it, we want to make it fair and have as many people as possible know about it. And the people apply and we can go through the list.
And did you have, did you have a date when you're going to vote on the appointments? Or?
The request was for the August meeting.
So can you just tell us what is the process going to be? Are you going to have an application, an interview, or you're just choosing people who are already active in the township? Do you have thoughts on that?
The August meeting may be a little bit optimistic. Maybe we should give some more thought to how we go about the process. And maybe we should choose for September.
I would like to suggest that you have a range of backgrounds, not just capabilities. Backgrounds being age, location within the township, time spent within the township, whether the people have lived in outside other communities that are comparable, that can bring some of that to the table, as well as whether they maybe work downtown and take public transportation.
I don't know if we want to get that complicated.
Well, I think it's very complicated when you put together a comprehensive plan if you don't have a diverse background.
The thinking from your contact at Havaford was to have a, an architect, a planner, a businessperson, a
Civil engineer.
A zoning person, a civil, and a traffic engineer. Is that either or or both?
So it was either or. So there was civil slash traffic. So if we provided a civil, they provided traffic. Architect slash planner. So if Radnor provided an architect, they provide a planner. And a business, somebody from one of the business associations, there were six, they had noted EAC, and I had requested we look at SWIMAC or EAC, like a representative from, from one of them. And I'll provide the memo that outlined that to the Planning Commission also, which will do a better job of what I'm remembering.
So Steve, what was the rationale, or what's the value add of doing this jointly with another township?
There, it's pretty, the value is pretty substantial. Because, you know, it's noted in the MPC that we should try to do this with our adjacent townships. It does provide some economies of scale. It puts us in a strong position for grant applications if we're applying for something, as, as both of us. Traffic, which flows between townships, stormwater, which flows between townships. And you, we'll still have our plan and they'll have their plan. But things that go on the border, you know, future zoning, where we touch, there could be some, we could make sure we're on the same page as far as that goes. So there's a host of, of things that we can do with this. Number one, as Susan said, it is long overdue. Our comp plan is very old. It was a great comp plan back in the day, but it's dated now. Thoughts have changed. So there is some synergy between doing with another township, and it could be any of them. And they approached us. I thought it was great. I think we'll, again, issues of traffic, zoning, stormwater, recreation was actually one of the other items. That was another person they would like to have as a recreation person. I think there's quite a few benefits. And I, going for the grants is another big one. And then we can point to our, our comp plan that we did in conjunction with a neighboring township.
Thank you. Moving adjourned?
Yes. Second? All right. Well, adjourn.